...this evening. Could everyone please take their seat? And please bear with these microphones. Thank you. And I have a public service announcement in case of an emergency. Could everyone please exit the chamber using the right or left stairwell? Proceed to the ground floor and exit the building to allow for emergency personnel to enter. Thank you very much. Also, we have a sign up sheet at the podium here for people wishing to speak during the public speaking portion of the meeting. If you could please sign up at the podium. I'll give you a few more minutes and then I'm going to start the meeting. Do you hear me? I know, right? I'd like to call this meeting to order 7:39 December 4th. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Please be seated. I now call this council into order. May I please have a roll call?
Alderman Ventura Morel.
Here.
Alderman Coop.
Here.
Alderman Scott Childress.
Here.
Alderman Worthington.
Alderman Carey.
Here.
Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderman O'Reilly.
Here.
Alderman Shabbitt.
Here.
Alderman Shaw.
Thank you. We have a quorum. I would now like a motion dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Motion second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adopted nine zero. Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the general bills?
Motion second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is adopted nine zero. We will now enter into the speaking portion of this meeting. Hold on one second. Okay, so we have nineteen speakers that have signed up. The council lot's a thirty minute time for this section of the council meeting. So if you could hold it for to an hour at least because we have a very large agenda this evening with budget issues and something like that. We have like thirty-six issues. So just give your name and address when you come to the podium. And please direct all your comments to the chair for the council members cannot engage in debate at all. Thank you for speaker please.
Antonio Clara.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Antonio Clara.
My name is Antonio Clara.
Vivo en la 632 Broadway.
I live in on 632 Broadway.
Y quiero agradecerles por este tiempo que nos brindan.
And I want to thank you all for giving us the time of the day today.
Para exponerlo de la ID municipal porque es muy importante para todos nosotros.
For the municipalities because it's something very important to the rest of us.
Y a todos los miembros de la D.C. Hudson Valley los esperamos en el segundo piso para unas palabras.
And everybody from Nobody Leaves Manhattan, we will be waiting for you on the second floor for a couple words.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker please.
Rosalia Ariaga.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Rosalia Ariaga. Vivo en la 47 Elmendorf.
Good morning. Good evening. My name is Rosalia and I live on forty-seven Elmendorf. Elmendorf.
Estoy aquí por un propósito de que seamos escuchados para poder tener las IDs que es muy importante.
I come here tonight for a very important purpose and it's about the municipalities.
Porque tenemos hijos y en la escuela y es muy complicado para nosotros.
Because we have children in the schools and our own children and it gets hard for us in the schools.
Y eso es todo, gracias.
That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker please.
Diana Lopez.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Diana Lopez and I live at thirty-eight Stephon Street. I am the Ulster County Organizer for Nobody Leaves Manhattan and I am here in full support of the municipal ID. For us, it is very important. Sometimes for people, they think that it's like what do they want an ID for? But this could change so many lives and just the fact of I see a lot of support from this. I want to thank all the, everybody and each of you for our support as well, for your support as well. And we want Kingston to be our third city that passes the municipal ID. And also too, for everybody that is here in support of the municipal ID. We will be, after the vote, we will be doing a program on the second floor. Para todos los que están aquí en apoyo de las identificaciones, después del voto iremos al segundo piso para un programa. Thank you, Diana. Thank you again.
Thank you. Next speaker please.
Catherine Hight. Good evening. Thank you. I'm Catherine Hight and I live at eighty North Water Street in the city of Poughkeepsie where I work. But for many years I lived on this side of the river and my kids went from K to twelve in the Kingston City Schools, including right across the street at Kingston High School. So it gives me great pleasure to return and feel the hope to be here tonight. I'm so excited that the city of Kingston will now join us in the city of Poughkeepsie to establish a municipal ID program and that we're pioneering a multi-city unified Hudson River effort. I think those of us who have driver's licenses forget how often we use them for identification beyond when we're driving. For those without driver's licenses, city IDs will better facilitate so many things as we've heard over these weeks. Many city ID programs have developed great partnerships with local businesses for discounts when they show the cards. Many banks around the country have recognized city IDs to open personal bank accounts and I look forward to all of us implementing this. You probably know that Sagerties Police Chief Joseph Sinagra gave a big endorsement of the ID program, saying that it's beneficial to law enforcement and to community members as a means to consistently report who they are, that when we have community members without legal IDs, it's difficult for them to navigate the community. Finally, as we work together for thriving small cities, having a city ID card is something that shows our unity, that we care for all our residents, young and old, those who've struggled as well as those who help form the backbone of our economy and the richness and diversity of our community. This includes immigrants and their descendants with all kinds of national, racial, and cultural backgrounds, as well as those whose ancestors were brutally forced to come here. Peoples and their descendants from across the globe make up our communities. In these times, I've had to ask myself, it's both a question and a challenge, who are we? I want to live, work, shop, eat out in a community where who we are feels as safe for all as we can make it, as mutually appreciated by one another, as recognized. I'm confident that it will be a win-win for Kingston as its implementation will also be for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Joseph DeFalco.
Yeah, thank you. Joseph DeFalco, I live at sixty-six Glen Street. I'm going to start at the top. This is the mayor's budget. And we'll start with, when the mayor gets brought up on charges, he picks his own ethics board to investigate himself. And then he has his corruption counsel take committees, counsel into private closed-door sessions, illegal. And I'm being nice by when I say giving them advice that's not reliable. But tonight, I'm going to change that. He's giving them not true, okay? And he's cost the city hundreds of thousands of dollars. We go down to the budget. Now, I attended the budget meeting and the controller was asked by the finance committee how he attributed two million dollars in surplus in the fund balance. And I don't buy his answer, that the departments were fiscally responsible all year and that's how he attributed having the extra two million dollars in the budget. Well, I attended the meetings. The departments have been at a deficit all year. You got the Parks Department had a hundred and thirty-five or two hundred thousand dollar deficit. The DPW had another deficit. You've had deficits in all the departments. The city clerk's office had a hundred and thirty thousand dollar deficit. He doesn't measure two million dollars. The two million dollars had to come from his cooked up budget because he cooked the books, okay? And they presented a deficit budget which allowed you to raise the taxes of residents of the city of Kingston. And then to get on the floor and say he's doing a great job that he's kept the tax cap under the two percent when he sends his assessor out, Dan Baker, and reassesses everybody for another two percent. Let's get some more local. Let's go to my alderman. The alderman's been there two years. He hasn't done one thing for any of the residents in my ward. What'd he get? A no parking sign? A handicap sign? We still have speeders. We still have problems in the ward. In fact, he's got a contractor running on Washington Avenue, which is his district, running wild, closing the streets six-thirty in the morning. That's the main thoroughfare. It's not just a side street. He's closing, they're closing everything. They're closing Lucas Avenue, Washington Avenue at six-thirty in the morning. He has ward meetings by appointment, okay? And now I understand they're looking for a raise. I think he ought to give his money back because he hasn't done anything in two years for his ward. All he has done is promoted memorializing resolutions for healthcare, gun control, municipal And nothing for the people it was born. Nothing. In fact, if you can't get a municipal ID that's from the Department of Motor Vehicle Bureau, which they give it to you for two bucks, there's got to be something wrong with you, okay? Why are we harboring illegal aliens? You all broke your oath of office when you took this oath. You swore on your oath that you were to hold the Constitution of the United States. And by declaring sanctuary city, you've gone against it. This administration is a disgrace. And if I had any opportunity to call Lincoln Uniondale, New Jersey, where the federal Southern District Courts are, and have a judge come up here and remove you, I would. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker please.
Letitia Lopez.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Mi nombre es Letitia Lopez. My name is Letitia Lopez. Yo vivo en la doscientos cincuenta y seis Lucas Avenue. I live on two hundred and fifty-six Lucas Avenue. Y solo estoy acá para pedirles que pues nosotros necesitamos una ID para identificarnos. I am here tonight to let you all know that we need an identification to be able to identify ourselves. Tengo siete hijos. I have seven children. Este he vivido acá por diecinueve años. I have lived here for roughly about eleven years. Y pues por eso estoy acá porque pues siempre me ha costado identificarme. And that's why I'm here today, because it's always been a struggle to be able to identify myself. Y pues no nada más para mí sino para todos los que lo necesitamos. And not just for myself, for everybody else that needs it. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker please.
Ellen DeFalco. To the bottom? Okay. Eric Mercano.
Good evening. My name is Eric Mercano, one oh five Pown Street, Kingston. I'm part of the UIDN and part of the Kingston Interfaith Council. I'm a pastor of Vera Real Evangelical Center. And as a pastor, I've been counseling and as our community and as a leader of Hispanic community, one of the common things I see is rejection in our community. Reject, rejection in all different ways. If you're short, color skin, color hair, rejection schools. And then I can be here, mention it for hours, all the types of rejections. And I hope that tonight, our community doesn't suffer another rejection. So I'm pretty sure that you're going to do both in our favor to support municipal ID. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Rebecca Martin.
Good evening, Rebecca Martin, Kingston, New York. I'm here tonight to thank the council for their consideration of the passage of Resolution two twenty-seven that asks for the DEC to request an enhanced participation plan for Kingston's environmental justice area in the Rondout as per the DEC's policy CP twenty-nine. Just to go on record, to say that CP twenty-nine is a policy that provides guidance for incorporating environmental justice concerns into the DEC's environmental permit review process and the DEC application of the State Environmental Quality Review Act with the Lincoln Park Grid Support Center, a fossil fuel power plant being proposed in the town of Ulster. Rondout has an environmental justice area located one point three miles downwind from the proposed power plant. The methodology for the policy being triggered is upon receipt of the application to the DEC for a permit covered by the policy. The DEC Division of Environmental Permits shall conduct a preliminary screening to identify whether the proposed action is near or in a potential environmental justice area and determine whether potential adverse environmental impacts related to the proposal. In this case, a power plant is warranted and the DEC did in fact identify an area inside of Kingston. The commissioner's policy CP twenty-nine essentially requests that the applicant provide the city of Kingston with an enhanced public participation plan for the citizens living in the environmental justice area downtown. And what it does is it gives the citizens, the stakeholders, an opportunity to learn about the project, to speak to the project in time prior to the draft environmental impact statement being delivered. They distribute and post written information. They hold public informational meetings. They establish easily accessible documents for the community, et cetera. So with your resolution, hopefully that you'll pass through tonight, you'll join the mayor of Kingston as well, who has issued a letter in the springtime making the request. So we'll be a unified voice to protect the citizens in the Rondout and to take advantage of this opportunity to protect the citizens. So thank you very much. I hope you'll pass it this evening.
Thank you. Next speaker please.
Marco Ochoa.
Hi, good evening. My name is Marco Ochoa and I've been living in the city of Kingston for over twenty-five years and as always, I'm here to give you my point of view. I appreciate that you guys give us the time to listen to us and for the support that you're going to give us. I know you guys will do the right thing. Anyways, after I've been living here for the last twenty-five years, I'm one of the leaders in the Hispanic community. I belong to the Kingston Task Force. I'm also in the youth bureau for the last, in the youth board for the last seven years. And I'm also in a new project that is called Board Peaceful Guardian Project in Kingston. The reason we are here is because we need that, the IDs. I know a lot of people don't pay attention to us because it doesn't bother them, it doesn't hurt us. People tell me why I'm always bugging about this. I'm a USA citizen, same as most of us. But for people who don't have the chance to have an ID, it's definitely painful. So please, I will ask you to vote on it and I know you will do the right thing. I appreciate from all the people who can't speak the language, but we'll know that you do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Leslie Gallagher.
Good evening. My name's Leslie Gallagher. I live at twenty-seven DeWitt Street. With all due respect and recognition of the members of our community and in the name of diversity and inclusiveness, I would hope you considered having a translator for English to Spanish in the near future.
Thank you. Next speaker please.
Isabel Benetto.
Good evening to everyone. I'm just here to support the municipal ID. And I'm here living in Kingston for more than twenty years and I also was in the same situation as they are here, you know, the ones who are here. And I really think that it was very hard to go without ID for many different things that we have to do at the bank, the school, and everything. So I just, I'm here to support everybody and if you can please help us and to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker please.
Gloria Wasslin.
Hi. I have a family of blue and gold parrots. They don't believe in birth certificates because they figure it's self-evident that somebody is born. They don't believe in ID because it's self-evident that there they are. And they don't believe in death certificates because they believe that it's obvious when somebody passes on, you don't need to have a piece of paper that certifies it. However, I believe that we are family, we need a municipal ID because we are family. Oh, my brothers and sisters and sisters. So if we need any kind of certification, certification to recognize who we are for banks, for any kind of income, for taxes, for any of that, then we need ID for all of our citizens to show everybody, not only in Kingston, not only in the Hudson Valley, not only in New York State and America, but the world, that this is, this is a place, it's a vortex of energy that recognizes the deep humanity and the deep truth that we are all precious. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker please.
Emma Kreitchi.
Hello. Good evening. My name's Emma Kreitchi and I'm here representing the Worker Justice Center of New York, which is a not-for-profit legal services and advocacy organization that serves low-income, primarily immigrant communities here in Kingston and across the region. And I want to express my gratitude to the members of the common council, for all of you, especially Majority Leader Renée Scott Childress, for all your efforts on this issue. I know there were many months of research and all kinds of discussions that went on around this proposal. So I just want to say, for many years, the Worker Justice Center has recognized the need for improved access to photo identification among Kingston residents and we have done our best to help meet this need through our own community identification program. Our experiences with the program that we have clearly demonstrate the demand for and the benefits of improving access to photo identification. Our organization began issuing community ID cards back in two thousand twelve and we did it because there was no municipal ID program in the city of Kingston and there wasn't a lot of interest or momentum at that point in time in creating such a program. And when we started our program, issuing IDs from our organization, we were overwhelmed by the demand. Within three months, we had issued nearly two hundred cards to people in the Kingston community alone. Many of those who came to us seeking ID cards were immigrants, but we also saw a high demand among youth, older adults, disabled folks, formerly incarcerated people. And as recognition for the program grew, we began to get more and more referrals from our local homeless shelter from domestic violence programs. So we saw that there really was a tremendous need across really diverse communities in the Kingston, in the city of Kingston. Now, because our program was not tied to a municipality, we had the ability to expand into other areas of the Hudson Valley. And eventually, we brought the program into Dutchess County, into Ulster County, I'm sorry, into Orange County, other parts of Ulster County, and most recently into Rockland County. Since two thousand twelve, we've issued nearly two thousand community ID cards in the Hudson Valley region. And several years ago, we began surveying cardholders about their experiences using our cards. Of those that we've surveyed, thirty-five percent report using the ID card during interactions with law enforcement. Fifty-one percent report using the card to make purchases or engage in financial transactions. And seventy-two percent of surveyed cardholders report having, that having the card provides them with an improved sense of safety and security. Other commonly reported uses for this card were things like accessing healthcare, educational services. If you want to go get and take your high school equivalency exam, you have to show photo ID, right? So little things like this, picking your kids up from school, you know, these are some of the uses for the ID that we have heard. some of the uses for the ID that we have heard. So, you know, we’re very proud of the work that we’ve done with that program, but we also recognize the limitations. As a not-for-profit organization, serving a very large region, it’s not possible for us to provide access to community IDs for all the people who would like to obtain them. Creating a municipal ID program in Kingston will help address an urgent need for city residents, a need that our organization alone cannot meet. And we know that based on the success of other cities throughout the country, that municipal IDs can be used for a broader range of purposes and are more widely recognized by government agencies, law enforcement, financial institution, and the business community. So in short, I’m absolutely thrilled to be here tonight to witness your vote on this critical measure. I look forward to working with all of you in the City of Kingston and the other community organizations here present tonight to promote the new Kingston Municipal ID Program. And I just also want to recognize that so many people in the room have been talking about this and hoping for this for so many years. It’s very meaningful to be here tonight with all of you, and I just want to thank everyone here who’s put in the effort to make this happen.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Russell Jenna.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing me. My name is Russell Jenna. I live at 256 Albany Avenue in Kingston. And I’m here tonight to discuss the resolution to ban or restrict heavy commercial vehicles from Albany Avenue. Due to the crumbling infrastructure, these high-speed vehicles are hitting ruts in the road, the manhole covers are sinking, there’s no real way to fix it, to shore up the crumbling sewer system beneath the street, and it’s just shaking our houses to bits. We all have experienced crumbling plaster. Some of my neighbors have had paintings fall off the walls. I’m continually straightening pictures, being woken up at all hours of the day and night by these pounding sounds that rattle the whole house, shake my doors and windows. It’s a severe problem, and I thank you for considering this resolution to ask the Department of Transportation to put on the weight restriction. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Sue Ruwa.
Good evening, everyone. I am Sue Ruwa. I live at 254 Albany Avenue. I’m Russell’s neighbor. And the Public Safety Committee was nice enough to listen to our pleas the other night, and we really appreciate that. The commercial traffic has increased exponentially since the improvement was made on the railroad bridge, the hump on Albany Avenue. And in what we’ve seen increasingly since that repair was made and that improvement was made, is that we have tractor trailers, we have, you know, really heavyweight trucks, a lot coming with concrete barriers that are being shipped via the throughway. It’s just been a tremendous increase, especially in the last few years. As Russell said, we’ve had damage to the house with plaster walls. I have a really old house that has really thick bluestone foundation, and when you can rattle that house that stood there for as long as it’s been standing there, it’s pretty indicative. I get very concerned about the infrastructure, as Russell said. I know the city isn’t in a position to replace it. I’ve seen the bill that you’re looking at relative to the roundabout for the infrastructure underneath that. We know we don’t have the money to do this, and so we have to do the next best thing, which is to try to preserve what’s there so that we can deal with it when we’re more financially set and able to deal with it. And we know that isn’t the place we’re in right now. So I would ask that you please consider the motion. And again, I want to thank the Public Safety Committee for listening to us, and thank you all for listening to us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Diana Zuckerman.
My name is Diana Zuckerman. I’m a local public school teacher and speaking tonight as coordinator of Mid-Hudson Valley Amnesty International. We feel proud and excited with the prospect of providing our community members with documentation of identity, visibility, and the message that all community members are valued and have a place here. Kingston can step up as leaders with municipal IDs. Our Amnesty International group is looking forward to saying that all Kingston community members have this basic human right of a recognized municipal ID. Thank you for supporting and representing all of us.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ricardo Isidoro.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Ricardo Isidoro.
Hello, good evening. My name is Carlos.
Ricardo Isidoro.
Sorry, pardon. Ricardo, Ricardo Isidoro.
Buenas tardes, señoras y señores senadores.
Good evening, officials.
Okay, la razón por la que estoy en esta noche aquí es por la razón que bueno tengo 20 años aquí en Kingston.
The reason why I’m here tonight is the same reason as why I’ve been here for the past 20 years.
Vivo la 56 de Summer Street.
I live on 56 Summer Street.
Y bueno, este ahora sí que bueno, la única razón que estoy aquí es que estoy representando, verdad, a toda mi comunidad.
The real reason why I’m here is because I’m representing my community.
Y bueno, la segunda razón que quiero es que ojalá que, verdad, todos ustedes, verdad, pues los representantes hagan algo por nosotros.
And the second reason is because I really hope you as our community representatives also represent us.
Para bien de toda nuestra comunidad de Kingston.
For the good of all the community in Kingston.
Bueno, muchísimas gracias, y les agradecemos de corazón a todos ustedes. Esperemos que hagan algo.
Thank you very much. I mean it from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Sue Rosenberg.
Hello, my name is Sue Rosenberg. I live in Solgardees, New York. And I’m here to speak very briefly about two issues that you are considering tonight. One, I’m so glad to support the proposition that everyone should have the possibility of having a municipal ID. I think it’ll go a long way in Kingston and beyond to create a more fair, safer, and equitable community. We have a long way to go, but I think municipal IDs are one piece that we can do. I also want to speak to, thank you for your consideration of the Resolution 227, which is the one that Rebecca spoke of, asking the DEC to request an enhanced participation plan for the Lincoln Park LLC as the DEC Commissioner’s Policy, which requires the company that is potentially going to bring a potentially dangerous power plant to our community to reach out to environmental justice community in Kingston so that everyone can be really clear about the risks that face not only town of Ulster, but our communities in Kingston and all around, including my town of Solgardees. So thank you for that consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ellen DeFalco.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Ellen DeFalco. I live at 66 Glenn Street here in the city. First, city residents should be outraged that the American flag is not flying outside City Hall at half-staff to honor the passing of a former mayor and our 41st president. Secondly, in my opinion, the second reading of the municipal ID legislation is misplaced because our county clerk’s office offers a non-driver ID card, and a bill is set to be proposed in Albany this coming year that will provide driver’s licenses to undocumented immigrants. We are one of three cities in the Hudson Valley and New York City to offer this ID, and there are only 15 cities nationwide to participate in this program. We can expect this to have ramifications. My suggestion is naturalization and participate in the state’s Naturalized New York program that provides assistance to low-income immigrants to become citizens. Now, regarding the budget, as stewards of our finances, when you cast your vote this evening for Resolution Number 220, are you comfortable knowing that this is the best document to offer to the taxpayers of this city? I offer that this document, again, is flawed and lacks transparency. Are the requested allocations put forth by departments the same dollar amounts? That, when they met with administration, were they changed? Or is it the amount that they originally asked for? Why are we not seeing whether the anticipated revenues reached the current benchmark? Over and over again, unrealistic anticipated revenue projections are being used to offset expenditures. Why can’t we see what’s spent to date? And why are we not seeing parking permits income under 3320-1720 when permit fees are not being raised in 2019? Are we encumbering a liability? It is also troubling that DPW is floating $124,415 expense and a $48,945 expense from internal accounts to cover shortfalls, purchase a new pickup truck, welding equipment, and cover retirement of an employee. Did you question why or if the same amount of money is being allocated in 2019 accounts? If so, DPW can do much more with less. Now, to paraphrase the question I heard at several finance meetings recently, “What’s on your wish list?” I’m going to give you mine. My wish list is to eliminate the Director of Communications and Community Engagement, the Director of Arts and Cultural Affairs, the Director of Health and Wellness, the Grants Manager, the Environmental Educator, the Educator Sustainability Coordinator, Environmental Assessment Manager. Desk audits should be requested, and a review of all of these responsibilities that they’re tasked with should be done. These do not add value, and they have become a liability for the taxpayers of the city. They can be repurposed to other governmental offices or handled by volunteer commissions. The hiring of a new permanent part-time preservation administrator in the Planning Department, who will be the navigator to handle paperwork for Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission, Heritage Area Commission, Planning Board and Tree Commission, imagine, is a Band-Aid approach and is re-eventing the wheel when there are policies and procedures already in place. In fact, the Heritage Area Commission has a application guidelines, which was passed in 2016, and if it revised it in some respects, it could still be a useful tool. Another guide for the Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission, Seven Ways to Love Your Older Home, could be updated and distributed to residents who need to present their cases before either or both commissions for approval. Do you know how many people come before these commissions on a monthly basis? How busy do you think this specialist is going to be for 17 to 25 hours a week? Since the beginning of the year, I’ll tell you, they’ve had 23 new applications. Does this warrant an individual being hired permanently, part-time, at $18,471? I don’t think so. Some months, they only had one new application. So, in fact, I believe there’s ample staff in the planning office who can navigate these residents easily. And on a final note, I would be remiss if I didn’t thank the Finance Committee and the Chairman for their participation in the budget process. That’s why we’re here this evening, and thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes the individuals that had signed up this evening. I just want to thank everyone for keeping their comments short. It really helps us later on this evening. So is there anyone that would like to speak that didn’t sign up at the podium? Okay. Just please come up and just make it as brief as possible. I’d appreciate it. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Myrna Capaldi. I live on Prince Street. And I want to just propose a little change in what I’m going to talk to you about the IDs. So I want you to think of yourselves when you go to the doctor’s and the doctor asks you, because they ask everybody, for an ID in order to sign you in and get you inside the doctors. I have no problem, all right? But a lot of the people that we have in our community are excluded, rather than included, as I am, into the access of many things that we take for granted. I can take my three-year-old grandson to Story Hour at the library and check out books for him because I have an ID that I can show to get a library card. Many of the people that are here today are not able to do that. I can open up a bank account like all of you can. Many of our neighbors that are here cannot. I think that we’re all here together to instill a sense of inclusion, rather than exclusion, and a sense of community. And we are all neighbors. We all belong to the same human race, which we should all be treated the same, whether we are legally here or not. I think that we should have, not a path to citizenship right away, that’s not what we’re talking about. And the other thing that I want to talk to all of you is that most of us come to a lot of things here at City Hall, and the Spanish speakers, it was made a comment to me earlier, that they all want to know you guys. They want to know the people, the council members that are in the community, maybe by first name, and know what it is that you are doing here for all of us in the community. And I would like to suggest that the next time that we have a meeting like this, that maybe you stand up and say, “Hey, my name is Mary,” or “My name is Smith.” You don’t have to tell us your life story, but make us feel included. Give us a sense of the community that we’re all looking forward to. And please, consider very seriously, we’re not asking you for driver’s license. Someone mentioned that, why are we doing community IDs? There’s driver’s licenses available, but not for everybody. Before we can run, we have to walk. Before we can walk, we have to crawl. And this is an avenue that we can start right now in order to allow all of us that want to run, to run. So thank you so much for your time, and please make this a big consideration of what your neighbors, people that live next to you, the people that clean up your tables at the restaurant, and the people who need to have some sort of recognition by having an ID. Please extend that courtesy and human dignity. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, this woman, and then the ma’am in the back.
Thank you very much. My name is Iris Marie Bloom, and I’ll speak briefly. In agreement with everyone that’s spoken in support of municipal IDs, just to add a few points, it would actively send a message to our community, to Kingston, that we are a community of love and welcoming and support, an active, positive message. It’s a message of anti-racism. It’s very conscious. It’s very clear. It’s a message of support for immigrants and also other vulnerable communities. It would also send a signal to Albany. There’s no reason to wait for Albany to act. It’s the other way around. If Albany is ever going to act, it’s going to come from municipalities like Kingston. So we really are very grateful that you’re going to do the right thing tonight. And I just want to briefly mention that in terms of special needs, that imagine a woman who is an immigrant... who is an immigrant, who is in an abusive relationship, goes to a shelter, and whose partner keeps her green card, because this is a form of abuse. It's legal abuse, psychological abuse, and it's a very real form of abuse. So there are people who are in desperate situations for whom an ID will mean everything. So thank you for considering this and passing it tonight. I also wanted to speak briefly in favor of, strongly in favor of Resolution 227 because the environmental justice provisions have to be followed before any consideration would be given to the glide path proposed frac gas power plant. So Resolution 227 makes sure that the environmental justice community is taken into account because most people don't even know what glide path is, or that this would be a frac gas power plant, or that there would be 50,000 gallons of diesel fuel as a backup, and that the harms would be very real. Nitrous oxide, particulate matter in the air, increased asthma, public health issues, CO2, of course, climate issue, a very real fire risk, and water pollution risks to our aquifers and surface waters. So in both cases, the issue is justice. Thank you for doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ed Hafmanns, and I guess I'm a guest here in Kingston from the Town of Marble Town. And I would like to speak to a demographic that I wish I didn't represent, older white men of European extraction. And I would remind us that we are all guests on this land, which was stolen from Indians, American Indians, native people. A lot of the immigrants here are actually from the Hispanic countries and arguably are more native than most of us older white men. And not only that, you know, not to denigrate our late, somewhat great departed president, but during the Bush administration, the wars in Latin America led to untenable conditions for the people who lived there. And they're not here on vacation in this cold, not-so-hospitable climate from a tropical paradise. They're here because they have no choice down there. Thanks partly to the land being stolen from native people and policies of our government in Latin America in the past decades. So I would hope that those who are inclined to say, oh, no, you know, they're undocumented or whatever, we're all kind of undocumented in this continent if we are white. And, you know, and our black sisters and brothers as well, were brought here in chains. So let's have a heart and allow for municipal ID for these people. And also to briefly touch on a subject that Iris had also mentioned about that power plant. I know it's in the Town of Ulster, but that stuff's going to blow all over the county. There's no reason on earth they could not put solar panels on about six or seven of those malls and totally meet the power needed by that plant. It's a no-brainer. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public speaking portion of the meeting now. We hereby stand closed, and we're going-